I'd like to call the City Council Finance Committee meeting of Tuesday, April 2nd, 2024, to order. Next item is attendance. Counselor Sullivan?
Here.
Counselor Bean?
Here.
Counselor Matthews-Kane? Here. Next up is public participation. Before I do that, I'd like to make two announcements. One is that we have a large group here tonight, and I want the opportunity to hear from as many people as possible. The Planning Commission has this room at 7:00. If we are still in progress at 6:45, we're going to move to either Room 201 or 315 based on availability. I have already worked out taping with Peter Coles, and taping will continue in the new room. And the second announcement is someone expressed concern about open meeting law in this meeting. I want to clarify that I spoke to legal, and because this is a posted meeting, all counselors can speak during public comment. However, I will not be able to allow city counselors, other than those on the Finance Committee, to speak outside of public comment, and I just wanted to clarify that before we started. And next up is public participation. We have the same rules every meeting. It's 15 minutes total for three minutes per person unless someone makes a motion to extend and we vote to approve it. So who would like to approach the Finance Committee? Please state your name and address for the record.
I was gonna say, don't tell me we got all these people we know.
They just wanna watch the show. Name's Rob Parent. I live at 240 Eastwood Drive. I'm here as an advocate for a new stadium and a new field in this city. As the head football coach here in the city for the last, you know, 10 seasons since 2014, I've had the privilege of going from town to town, regionally and statewide, and our facilities are among the worst that we could participate on. Our city's track record of maintaining grass fields the last few years has not been good. Our practice facilities at the high school, we practice on rubble and dirt and rock, pretty unsafe for our kids. We have to limit the amount of things we can and cannot do at practice. So it makes things pretty difficult from a player's standpoint, a player's safety standpoint, and from a coaching standpoint. And so, you know, I'm here to support the city doing what it can to provide a new stadium for all athletics, to help our students out. Thank you.
My name is Ralph Figgy. I live at 53 Brookline Avenue here in Westfield. In 2000, I became the freshman boy's soccer coach. In 2003, I became the indoor track and field coach, as well as a JV boy's soccer coach. In 2006, I became the varsity coach for the Westfield High Track Boys and Girls Team. I carried that position and then specialized with the boys until 2012. The last track meet that was held at Westfield High School was in 2006, and that is because I took it upon myself as coach to line that track. It took me a week to put in four lanes, put in all the vectors for the throwing events, and then get officials to take care of it. It is unfortunate that Westfield is the only high school that does not have an all-weather track in the state of Massachusetts. We're the only one. It's really despicable that we have not been able to have a home meet at the high school, that we have to rely on Westfield State for their track, which we rent. It costs money. I have been working on this project for years, and every time I get close, the major roadblocks of progress has always been money. Now we have an opportunity where we can take advantage of a very generous offer by a city department to help out another city department. And I think we would be absolutely foolish, at this point, not to take advantage of this opportunity that has been presented to us. So with that background, I'm encouraging this committee to act on this motion in a favorable way and as quickly as possible. Thank you very much.
Would anyone else like to approach the Finance Committee? Anyone? All right, seeing no one? Oh, okay.
Jane Axon, 341 Steiger Drive. I'm here to talk about in lieu of taxes. That means instead of paying taxes, it's something we can't make a nonprofit or any other parcel that's in our city that's not paying taxes. We can't charge them taxes, but we can ask for in lieu of payment, in lieu of their taxes. So that is what we're here to really to discuss, that we have the Westfield Gas and Electric, and we're sort of asking them nicely to pay in lieu of taxes. But my point is, I can't tell you how to spend my taxes. They shouldn't be allowed to tell us how to spend tax money either. But I think everyone needs a refresher course in enterprise accounting. In enterprise account in Massachusetts, we have three of them in Westfield. We have water that has a clear goal of providing drinking water to all the residents. We have sewer that has a clear goal to provide sewerage to all the residents, but it's very limited. We have like 6,000 houses on sewer. So those two enterprise accounts are running with a lot of serious problems. PFAS in our water, they're running on a shoestring budget. Then we have the third enterprise account. It's called Gas and Electric. Gas and Electric were merged together in one account. It has a clear goal. It is to provide gas and electric to all the residents at a fair price. It should have a clear goal, and that's where we're sort of running amok here. The clear goal is for that account to have, be separate from everything else, show financial statements, show what revenues are coming in from our residents at a rate, and minus their expenses, it should be breaking even. So revenue minus expenses minus depreciation equals a break-even zero. Now, nothing can run as a break-even. So let's say they have some capital projects, or they know they have more expenses in the future. They can raise their rates, and they can now start making a small profit. That's great. We allow them to keep the profit because they're gonna use-
Make a motion to extend for two minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
They get to keep the extra money, their profit, and keep it in their retained earnings and use it for the next year. Now, sometimes they run a loss, and that indicates that you need to raise the rates. And it helps if they have that retained earnings to come into that next year. But if they really ran amok, our general fund would have to kick in and pay for their big loss. But, okay, the whole goal of an enterprise account is to have one goal, run clean and break even. Westfield Gas and Electric seems to have veered off course. They went on and they started doing fiber, Whip City Fiber. When they did that, it's my understanding, they have used their employees, our city trucks, our gas, our, you know, the other expenses, the equipment, and they are now making a profit. I do not see another separate account or an enterprise account for Whip City Fiber. I see it all intermingled into the numbers. That is not what an enterprise account does. It's really a new business, and it should be pushed off and made into its own account, and it's running for a profit, and it's going to other communities. Now, I said an enterprise account really was just for the residents, you know, water, sewer. It could be trash pickup, it could be the airport, it could be school busing. Those are enterprise accounts. But when you co-mingle into other things, you distort the whole picture. It's too late. In my opinion, it's too late to pull out the employees, the trucks, the equipment, and try to get a percentage of the building and try to get-
That's the end of the second minute. You have to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm wrapping it up. Community Preservation Act, that's for recreation. Why don't you ask them for the money? They're over there on the 11th asking for new projects, and we shouldn't be... An enterprise account serves the community and does not compete against private companies. Whip City Fiber is competing against Comcast. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to approach the Finance Committee? Going twice? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to move on to our next agenda item. Can I get a motion on item number four?
I'd move appropriation of $29,000 from free cash to the Fire Department Capital Projects Account for the pump station replacement at Southampton Road Fire Station.
Second.
Good evening. So I wrote a letter to the mayor asking him to fund the replacement of a pump station at our little, Station 3, North Side Station. In 1998, when there was a renovation at Station 3, they put in a grinder pump station with all the controls and everything. Unfortunately, well, fortunately, it's lasted 26 years. Unfortunately, at the time, it was, the lowest bidder was used, and inferior materials and equipment were used also. We have been having constant issues with this system, and last summer, we had a pump go down. It was a specialty pump because the city wastewater doesn't carry it. We had to purchase it. It was about $3,800, and now we're having continued problems with it. Head of Wastewater, Mr. Gemelli, wrote you a letter saying why this was important, and if it's okay, I would like to read that. This is from Mr. Gemelli. "I am writing this email in support of the Fire Department's request of the City Council Agenda appropriation of $29,000 from free cash to the Fire Department Capital Projects Account for a pump station replacement at the Southampton Road Fire Station. The wastewater department highly recommends that this old problematic sewage pump station and control panel be upgraded to an E1D series, DHO71 grinder pump system. These E1 pump stations are very reliable and cost-effective and relatively easy to install. The existing pump station is in poor condition and continues to have multiple operational issues due to its age and condition. The original design plan back in 1997 called for installing an E1 grinder pump station, and unfortunately, that did not happen because the existing cheaper version was installed instead, leading to the needed replacement we are now requesting now. This proposed pump station replacement should last for decades to come with intermittent pump replacements needed due to the wear and tear. We carry these E1 pumps in stock in the wastewater department, so a pump replacement would be straightforward and fairly quick when needed." And then we have an on-call excavation contractor could easily replace this pump station with the E1 pump system, as they already did recently. So this is really to replace outdated, worn-out infrastructure.
And I just wanted to note for the record, Mr. Gemelli couldn't make it because he has another meeting at the same time, and I did ask if we could wait on this, and he said it should be done as soon as possible.
I'm good.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, 3-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You, too.
Thank you.
Okay, can I get a motion on item number five?
I would move approval of a bond order in the amount of $11,100,000 for athletic field improvements in the city of Westfield.
Second. Okay. So we're gonna be discussing this $11 million bond. I think there's a presentation. Who's gonna come up and make the presentation?
Tammy Teff, Chief Procurement Officer for the City of Westfield. We are here to talk about the athletic field project, improvement project that we've been working on. I'd like to bring up Mark Aragony and John Hammer from SLR to kind of give you a brief overview of what we are looking to do.
Thank you, Mark Aragony. I'm with SLR Consulting. I am a senior principal landscape architect who has been working with the city on this project for about over a year through feasibility up to where we are right now, which is, we are at a 25% design level for three projects that we're referring to as the high school stadium, the varsity softball field, and a rectangular field we're referencing as the Boardman Field. Okay, they're all generally on the high school, within the high school area, and the way I set this up was, I can walk through, I believe everyone has a copy, a smaller scale, but if I could spend just a couple minutes highlighting the points of it and then just run you through a little bit of breakdown on where we feel the costs are gonna come in, and then if you have any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them as you see fit.
You can actually, I mean, we probably have the smaller documents, but if you want to spin those around and just put them on the ground so people can see them, that's fine. We'll sit with the committee.
Sure. If you don't mind.
No, no, we don't. We have it in front of us.
Good? Okay, so the first project is the high school stadium. We have Montgomery Road at the bottom of the page. The existing high school parking lot is here. Existing high school building is there. As you can see, this project consists of a new eight-lane earth-in-running track that we heard a little bit about earlier. It also includes a full-size rectangular field that will be able to play football, full-size soccer, any MIAA-sanctioned event. Synthetic turf field here. It's currently designed, at 25% design, to have a brock pad system and an alternative infill, so we've been instructed to not have your sand crumb rubber infill, but it's, we're gonna look at an alternative infill material. As far as the throwing events and the events that happen outside of the running track and the field itself, we have long jump in each direction outside the field here. We have pole vault in this area here. We have shot put in this area here. We have discus in this area here, and we have javelin set up for this area over here. The one change, as we continue to move forward in design, is this javelin will probably slide over to make sure we can ensure that we have enough outfield distance, adequate outfield distance for the existing JV baseball field in this location here. Some other things that are included in this plan, definitely upgraded walkways, ADA accessibility from the parking lot through into the complex, and a 1,300-seat new bleacher system. That new bleacher system also has universal accessibility with a ramp system to the front row. It also has a press box associated at the top of the bleachers, which also has a ramp system to provide universal access all the way up to that press box. That is a Massachusetts regulated and has to have ADA accessibility to the top there. The facility itself will be surrounded by a pave outside of a chain-link fence. That's something that we always design to a project, because you do have spectators that stand on the outside of the fence that just don't want to use the bleacher system. It also allows for a nice hard edge from the natural grass complex. Also shown on this project is a rectangular area right here, which has been set aside for a concessions restroom building. So while we stay on this project, John, how are your arms doing?
Running out of time for you.
So we, oh, thank you. Along Montgomery Road, there is existing, a tree landscape, evergreen, some deciduous trees. Then there's a break in that landscaping, and that picks up, the existing wood line picks up in this area. What we're proposing here is to continue that landscaping buffer with some deciduous evergreen trees along Montgomery Road. Some of the details that we'll figure out is, we still want to maintain the vehicular access maintenance gate that exists right there, but we are improving the access to the facility from the parking lot itself. Again, 25% design level. As far as costs go for the project that you see here, this also has a full set of design plans that go along with this set. We are looking at approximately $7.5 million. I think we're at $7.4 million for the project that you see here. That does not include a restroom concessions building that I referenced here, and that one, we're figuring budgeting with the amount of urinals and things that have to go in there, is about $800,000, $90,000 that will be added on to that. Seven and a half million dollars, okay. The break. That's the first project. Second project that we have been discussing is on one board.
There is, there is an easel.
Right there.
There's an easel.
There are two projects shown on this plan. Again, Westfield High School, the track is over here. This is the Boardman Complex that exists. There's two natural grasses that are out there right now. As you can see, we're proposing another full-size rectangular synthetic turf field, again, surrounded by paved lawnway, and proposing a new universal festival connection into the school property in the parking lot that exists back there. Right, failed to mention this, the stadium project would be fully competition model on WD-A. This field will not be, this is just solely a rectangular, no earth-in-track, no running track around it, but the idea of having this field is where the high school stadium field will become, is probably used for two rectangular practice fields. So there will be one synthetic turf field. This will allow more programming for practice and additional games. Girls field mountain, girls' boys' lacrosse. When you scoop, when you have to scoop a ball or play on a natural grass field, this is a much preferred system to be able to play in. So with football, soccer being able to be played on either this rectangle or this rectangle, it allows a little bit of flexibility on how they can be programmed. Also, including the urgency access for police and ambulance, so that we can have quick access to the field on occasion. No additional parking proposed for here. We can simply rely on using the school parking and buying industrial connections there. This project that you see right here, we have it figured at 25% design level with contingencies included in all these numbers that I'm giving you, $2.4 million. The third and last project is the existing location of the high school varsity softball field. We're supposed to transition that into a turf complex. It's more than just putting turf down here, though. As you know, there is a tennis court project that's also starting construction. We're sliding the tennis courts down to alleviate some pressure and confinement of where the girls' field dugouts are, backstop, things of that nature. So this project will also include all fencing, new dugouts, new backstop closures, bleacher pads, bleachers, and a new outfield and all fencing, all synthetic. That project, we have budgeted $1.2 million for that one. If you all add those three projects up, is where the 11.1 number that was referenced comes from. This is not lit. The only lit field will be the stadium field that I went through first. That is the quick summary of what the projects are. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Sure, I'll go first. Just back on the stadium, I think you did a nice job of referencing all the track and field events that can be held there. It's still a multi-use stadium, so soccer, men's, women's, boys', girls'.
Correct.
What else can be played on that?
Yeah, you can play, it's sized to house any rectangular MIAA-sanctioned event. So from boys' lacrosse, girls' lacrosse, field hockey, soccer, football are your main primary ones. They can all be played on that stadium field.
Okay. You, in the budget that you just went through, the 11.1, what's the contingency that's built in there?
Okay, so we have, we look at a couple different contingencies. One, we're at 25% design level, so we always recommend carrying a pretty significant contingency. Industries. Right, so what we have built in is, we developed these plans mostly in 2023. We're continually seeing project costs come in now. We have other projects that we've designed that are under construction. So the way things in the construction market are going, we put a 2024 inflation adjustment on that one, included with a contingency of 10%. So we added 10% on top of all of our unit prices. So we developed, because we have a full set of plans for all three of these projects, we have a pretty detailed unit price for all the elements, fencing, surfacing, pavements, you name it, we have unit prices. When you add all that stuff up, we added the 10% contingency, you know, and when you are looking at numbers in the millions, these contingencies do add quite a bit, but at that 25% level, we feel that it's extremely important to keep.
Okay. And then I guess this only, question probably only pertains to the, I'll call it, the non-natural grass, so the artificial turf. What's the material made out of? And you said you had, you were carrying two options in terms of the under-material?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Not using, not using sand, you said other alternate materials. What's the material made out of?
Right, so the synthetic turf itself is made up out of a, for lack of a better term, we'll call it a plastic upright fiber and a backing material. Okay? The infill material, which 10 years ago was mostly always a sand and a crumb rubber or recycled tire infill material that goes into the monofilament or split filament fibers to form your base. This particular system that we're using is the fibers, the backing, a sand, and an alternative infill material. So the alternative infill material has not been selected yet, but I can tell you that it's either a TPE or a manufactured material, or it could be a natural material, whether it be a coconut fiber husk, which is organic, or it could be a brock fill material, which is southern yellow pine, manufactured, small, small wood material combined with the sand. That is the way that we've budgeted this project. We haven't actually picked the one that it's going to be. All we can tell you is, it will not move forward with crumb rubber and sand. As far as underneath that system that I just described, will be a brock pad system, which is a shock pad system that will be installed on top of a stone layer, and what that does is it allows you to be a little bit more flexible on your alternative infill material and still provide the same safety factors, GMAX testing, for people falling on it, heads falling on it, players' bodies falling on it. So the whole system would be the stone layer, the brock pad or a shock pad layer, the actual synthetic turf, and then the infill material, which there's a couple different ways it could go, but it will be a sand and an alternative infill.
So why not crumb rubber and sand? Why not crumb rubber and sand? Sorry for my voice.
Well, pretty simple. We always put everything on the table when we sit down with any community that we work with, and through the development of the feasibility, it was determined and it was directed to us to say, let's look at alternative infill materials. We did Agawam High School a few years ago. That is a standard crumb rubber and sand infill material.
Okay. Do any of the alternative materials have PFAS in them?
Do any of the materials have PFAS in them? Our understanding of the PFAS itself, it's a very hot topic right now, the way that our specification of these materials will be is we will do a, sort of a third-party-
specification of these materials will be, is we will do a, sort of a third-party testing protocol, so that any of the materials that we specify, we will specify as PFAS-free. They will be tested in the factory, whether it be the synthetic turf itself, which where the PFAS do come into contact with the synthetic turf is during the manufacturing. It's not in the material itself, it's in the lubrication of the equipment as they extrude the, the material. So what we've done recently, we have two or three projects that are currently in design and out to bid, where the third-party testing, we make sure that it tests PFAS-free at the facility before it gets delivered, and then any material that gets delivered onsite before it gets installed, it's third-party tested again. And what we're testing for is the regulated, state of Massachusetts regulated PFAS materials as they stand today.
Does the city get a copy of the third-party review?
Definitely.
The city ultimately approves it.
I think, I think I'm good.
Just while we're on this topic, can you talk more about the stone layer at the bottom? Is it like crushed stone or like pebbles or what is it exactly?
It's multiple, so it's all part of the drainage layer. These fields are designed to drain very well, and that's the benefit, you can use them in a rainstorm because the infiltrate, infiltration rates are so good. So the synthetic turf system drains, the shock pad system that I talked about is punched, that drains, and then what it'll go into is a, a fine graded, sort of a finer stone material, think bluestone screenings, stonedust material, and that's put on there to get the, the fine graded material, get the plinarity pretty much perfect before that brock pad and the system is light on top of it. Below that one is a, more of a clean crushed graded stone, and it's a drainage layer. So these are all quarried locally and they would be delivered onsite and all installed in a section. There would be drainage piping that would be installed within that, and then you would have your native subgrade below that.
And what would the piping do, the drainage piping?
So these fields function so well on drainage, that we want to collect some of the, some of the infiltrated water that will go into a infiltration, excuse me, infiltration system, an engineered system, to ensure that there is no increase in water volume leaving the site at any one of these three project areas, and it also is used as a water quality measure. So these are fully engineered projects. They have to meet all the stormwater regulations, not only set forth by the city, but also the state.
Any questions?
Mine's gonna be more about just the bonding piece.
Okay. All right, I have some questions about, like the physical, so, or this isn't, but how will the fields be shared? Like, how will certain sports be prioritized and why?
I don't know if I'm the right one to answer. I mean, if you want me to give it a shot, yeah, I think it'd probably be better.
Greg Voros, athletic director. Priorities will lie in what our priorities are for that particular day or season, and as we consider all of our teams equitable, I think that is the most important thing. So I, I think that's probably the true benefit of this project, is how great of an impact in a positive way it can have on all of our teams, not just a, a football team or soccer team, or in a spring or fall event. We, we foresee being able to go out there in the winter months if weather permits to allow for practices and workouts as well. So I think priority, you know, like I said, will lie in maybe the level of event, if it's a postseason game, maybe that gets priority, but I think, you know, treating it from an equitable standpoint to start out with. And then as we move into a postseason type of environment, prioritizing which sports and which teams and which schools, school between the two high schools would be prioritized that day or that week. So I think, you know, both, both ways, it could work for the high schools and within the community, however, we feel we should prioritize it for that particular event or season.
Okay. Well, this is, some more questions for you. Will it be used for games or practices or both?
Yeah, both. And on a given day, you know, you're gonna see both out there. And whether that's set up, to prioritize the event itself, you know, on a Friday perhaps, if there's a football game, you know, we set it up so that that seven o'clock football game has enough time to set up and warm up, and the visiting team has that, has that ability as well, but hopefully to have time before that to have a practice. And, you know, I think we could foresee a three or four time slot setup for each field, especially if it's lighted. And that, part of that scheduling, you know, we're, we're talking to other towns and communities about how they set up their, their turf field, like in Agawam who's, was just done, but, you know, I think being able to prioritize will, will be one of our main focuses, but I don't foresee that being an issue amongst the teams as long as we're, we're careful and equitable the way we set things up.
Will it be used by entities other than Westfield High School teams?
Yes, absolutely.
Such as?
Such as the tech school or the community youth programs. You know, just as we use the fields now for various events, I could, I foresee it being used in a similar manner, and maybe even increasing our ability to host championship-level events for MIA sports, or even for youth sports as well, that we can bring in, you know, communities to our, to our facility now, with the new, with the new facility.
Okay. Will it be open to the public?
Yes, I definitely think so, yep. I think that's a main benefit to a track complex, right, which, which we're without at this time.
I, when I read through the proposal, they talked about ticketing, like how will ticketing work?
That's a good question. Right now, we're still with a cash ticketing program, the way we do things. A lot of neighboring communities have gone to an online ticketing system, some include both, but that, you know, how we do it, the way we do it, I think those are good questions. Having a auxiliary building that we can, you know, run the ticket booth at, at the, at that stadium with, with the lights on Montgomery Road would be a benefit to us. But that's a great question. We'd like to move to a more new age ticketing system, but at this time, we're, we're still with a cash business right now.
All right, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
And I, so I, I tried to group the questions so people wouldn't have to jump up and down, but I'm not sure who answers the next question. So restrooms and concessions are not in the picture, but, they're in the picture, but they're not part of the bond, correct? So are we gonna build that now though, and what's the funding source, and what's the plan for restrooms and concessions?
So for design purposes, the project is set up to include that at any point in the future. So the walkways, the location of where it's going to go, nothing that would be built under this 11.1 million dollars would prohibit that. We have a separate line item, as I mentioned before, for that project, but currently it's not in there as far as how it's gonna go later on. I'm not exactly sure where.
Is there a plan though?
So currently, no. As, as Mark and John have alluded to, they're at 25% design, and that's where you see some of those contingencies. So I think the goal is to continue looking at the concession and bathrooms, and to see if it is something that we can feasibly do, but it is not included in this bond currently.
Okay.
This, this isn't a question, it's a statement. Can we please not build a 1,300-person stadium without a bathroom? I can't think of a dumber thing to do. So please, can we size it correctly, have it there on day one, and if we're gonna do this, can we please do it right? It's ridiculous.
And again, I don't know who's gonna answer this question. So this is being positioned so that a new Westfield High School can be built, correct? Like, there's discussion about keeping the pool and then extending, so is, has an architect or a builder confirmed that that new position for the potential high school will work, or are we just, like, hoping?
No, I, I would say that the first part of this project was actually a feasibility study, where we looked at a myriad of different field locations, probably four or five different locations for the high school stadium on the high school property in different locations, and a lot of the location where it ended up being was to allow the greatest flexibility for expansion of the high school. That is one of the main reasons why it is where it is. So there was a pretty exhaustive feasibility portion, I wanna say we looked at five different locations for the stadium.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So why are we choosing artificial turf over natural grass?
I can give you, I was gonna add on to a little bit of the athletic director's comments as far as programming. Where we see a lot of communities going in the form of a synthetic turf facility is the programming aspect is so severely limited when you have natural grass fields that became natural grass fields just because they were flat areas, or they used to be storage areas, they were cut down, and they were never engineered as natural grass fields. Those, those areas in our New England weather system are very difficult to recover, you can't play on them sometimes after a couple days of rain, and what that does is it forces an extreme amount of effort and loss of fields for programming of any activity, whether it be the high school or youth programs. Where we see the benefit of synthetic turf is, you can program pretty much anything you want, even in the rain, because of the drainage system that's engineered and the product itself and how it functions. So I believe the reason why we're looking at synthetic turf fields here is to allow the amount of programming that really the city deserves to have on those fields, to support not only the high school sports, but also the, the city, other city park and rec activities that may have to happen on there. So it really is a direct result of how that field can perform in the weather, in the climates that we live in right now. I mean, that's, that's pretty much what the benefit is. We also look at the, the maintenance. We, I think we heard a little bit earlier on, is natural grass fields in a municipal environment and municipal budgets are very difficult to maintain in order to keep them safe and up to par to play on. The benefit of a synthetic turf field is it maintains its plinarity, it's a safe, level playing surface that the weather doesn't impact, and it needs to have a groomer dragged around it once a month, and you're good to play on it. As far as safety and the Gmax that we talked a little bit about, that has to be done annually. Usually you do it after the summer, before the fall sports happen, you come out, you test your field, they test it in about 10 different areas. If the groomer has to be dragged a couple times around that one area, if a little bit of more infill material that we talked about needs to be added, that's taken care of, and then the field is played on. So the maintenance is cut way down, which has a direct impact on a whole bunch of things. So it's really, it's the use, it's the maintenance, and the programming.
You talked, you, I thought we were going with Brockville, but you're saying now we're looking at a couple different options, and you talked about the first one was like a manufactured option? Can you elaborate on that one?
There are probably four or five products that we would say are of the alternative. There's a coated sand, there's a manufactured TPE product, which are plastic pellets, there is brock fill, which is that southern yellow pine, there is a cork nut product, which is just what it sounds like, it's a cork and a coconut product. All of these have their benefits, all of these have, you know, a little bit of, maybe a little bit more maintenance, but we can tell you that the brock fill has been used in New England, in Massachusetts. It comes with a 16-year warranty on that product, so it's, it's something that's been pretty proven, and if we get to the direction to go that way, that is 100% within budget to be able to use that product.
But we haven't decided on ultimate, just that we're not doing crumb rubber?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Counselor Mello had submitted a lot of questions to me, I'm gonna ask some of them now. She's asked, what is the calculated difference in temperature in the surrounding neighborhoods by replacing acres of water evapotranspiring grass with synthetic materials?
I did see that question, and there could be an answer to that question, but there's a lot of variables that go into that, as you can imagine, like the size of the neighborhood, the acreage, the square footage. We know that our products, our projects are three and a half acres in size, we know that our projects are existing natural grass, they will be converted to synthetic turf if the project moves forward. So in order to give you an answer, we'd have to figure out, are we talking about, you know, 15 acres of a neighborhood, 20 acres of a neighborhood, if it's a calculation? I just don't have that information. What I can't, what I can say is that although MS4 and engineering and water quality does force a synthetic turf field to be analyzed as impervious, you can't really classify a synthetic turf field as a parking lot. There's a big difference, like a parking lot is impervious surface, a synthetic turf field, as I explained, the cross-section of it, it's designed to infiltrate. A parking lot, impervious, holds heat in the summer because of its density and because of its materials. A synthetic turf field will heat up in the sun, just like a natural grass field does, but a synthetic turf field doesn't hold that heat. When the sun angle is different, the clouds hit it, or the sun sets and you're playing at night. So there's a big difference on the impervious aspect of it. We use the impervious aspect to design the stormwater handling system, because that's what regulation tells us to do, but there is definitely a difference when you look at what the impervious nature of it is.
Okay. So if I change that question a little bit, like, will it be, is the synthetic field hotter than a natural grass field?
I think it's safe to say that a synthetic turf field would be hotter than a natural grass field under optimal sun conditions, yeah.
Okay, okay. You did kind of cover this, this is another question. What is Gmax testing? How often does it have to take place? What happens when the fields are tested unsafe for hardness? So you did touch on that a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, the protocol, it's, it's laid out really well, and the specification and the maintenance process. Usually what happens is a municipal department, whether it be the school department, DPW, Park and Rec, whoever takes control of that facility, will walk that field, coaches will be on that field, they'll notice it, and with the grooming of once a month, it really takes care of itself. The Gmax testing is in, the annual Gmax testing for the life of the project, or the product, which comes with an eight to 10-year warranty on the, on the synthetic turf system, is included within the bidding specifications. So the company who installs it has to have third-party come back and test it every year during that warranty process. So it's not an added fee that the city would have to incur.
Okay. What, this is another Counselor Mello question. What precautions before and after, while our teams and spectators need to take for safe play and practice?
I would say that it's equivalent, safe precautions would be equivalent, whether they're synthetic turf or natural grass, or a cinder track, or a urethane paved track. You have to monitor the heat, you have to monitor the conditions, so I really don't see that there's a big difference in how you would treat it as far as spectator safety, player safety. If it's 100 degrees out, you shouldn't be playing on the field if it's natural grass or synthetic turf field, or running a, a track event.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
Thank you, yeah, so the MIA, our governing body at the state level, gives us a, a number that we have to follow in terms of the temperature reading. So whenever that reading is too high, too hot, we cannot play, and we take our meter physically to each field, right? So if we have a field in the shade and it's below our threshold, we're good. If we have a field in the sun, we'll continue to, to monitor it. I will, our athletic trainers out there. If a turf surface is indeed a little bit hotter than grass, we'll be able to monitor that in our handheld devices that we have already within the athletic department.
I have some more questions from Counselor Mello. What is the expected useful lifetime of the proposed products to be installed?
Okay, so I mentioned before, I think we have about three products that carry a warranty with them. We won't get into the stone, that's a natural material, but as you get to that upper layer, you have the synthetic turf and the backing. That, depending on the final product that ends up in manufacturer, they come with an eight to 10-year warranty, some have a 10, some have an eight, I don't even know if there's a nine-year out there, but that's covered, an eight-year warranty, and that also includes that Gmax testing annually that I talked about. The next product is the infill material. So say you were to go with a brock fill, which is that southern yellow pine manufactured little wood chip, that comes currently with a 16-year warranty. So say you were to go with a Brockfill, which is that Southern Yellow Pine manufactured little wood chip, that comes currently with a 16-year warranty. The lives, and then the last product would be the shock pad that we talked about, that comes with a 20-year warranty. So these are long-term warranties that the manufacturers are standing behind their product. I think the one summary is we've been seeing these turf fields, depending upon the use that's on them, they're averaging about 10 years. We've seen some replace that 13 years that probably shouldn't really replace that 12 years. But it's about a 10-year replacement cycle. So those products that carry a longer 16, 16-plus, 20-year warranty, they're reused. So in 10 years, hypothetically play this forward, you have to replace the carpet itself and put a new synthetic turf down. What they do is you vacuum out the infill material, store it because that has a warranty on it. You'd put your new product, your new carpet down, for lack of a better term, and you would then, you would keep your Brockpad there, which was, would stay in place. You'd put your new synthetic turf down and then you'd reinstall your warranted infill material.
She had asked questions about proper maintenance and upkeep costs and I feel like you covered that and how much of the system needs to be replaced and when, I think you covered that. So what is the end-of-life procedure for removal and disposal for each of these products?
So we have replaced a few turf fields recently. There has been other fields replaced in the surrounding area. Basically that process, similar to what I just said, and not to repeat myself, is if your infill product carries a warranty with it, it is, it is collected, stored, the carpet is removed and then you have options on how that carpet is disposed of. Some communities say, you know, dispose of it in a proper way. Some communities are saying this needs to be, go to a recycling center. There was a recent project in Massachusetts that just got the turf taken up and it went to a recycling center, I believe in Texas. And I believe they recycled 98, I believe it was 98% of the material. So that's a decision that has to be made in that 10-year project at how, how you're gonna call for it to be removed and how you're gonna put that out to bid. That is a project that goes out the public bid for removal. I can tell you that the shock pad, I referenced Brockpad, that's just one manufacturer of a shock pad. They currently are offering a cradle-to-cradle recycling so that 100% of that material, after the 20 years, their warranty, that gets taken up, gets, goes back to the Brock factory. They clean it, they grind it, they clean it, they grind it into pellets and they remake new Brockpad with it. So the industry and the manufacturers are all paying close attention to life expectancy and what happens at the end of the life of the products. So there will be some options that, that the community will have to discuss.
This is my question and it's, what is the cost to replace and dispose of the turf at the end of a lifetime? And my, I did see an article, West Springfield just redid theirs a year or two ago, it was like 1.2 million. Is that roughly what it will cost?
Not knowing exactly what, did they have to replace all their infill?
And they actually, they did, they redid the track and, and they did the turf.
Yeah, that's, that sounds reasonable. I would say if we were just hypothetically, $2,024, if you were to replace a turf system now, recycle the infill, keep the shock pad system that was there. It's a hundred to $150,000 just to do the removal of the, of the turf. And then you're probably looking at about a half a million, $500,000 to put a new turf carpet down and then you're putting, so you're at about a $600,000, $650,000 number if you were just replacing carpet.
And how does the track, like what's the upkeep on the track?
So the track is, you know, it's a bituminous or an hot mixed asphalt with a urethane topping on it. You have to recoat them, there's very strict standards for turf, or I'm sorry, for tracks, urethane tracks. It's a 777 protocol that after seven years, you need to resurface it. If you do it in that seven and seven years again, you should get 21 years out of that track before you have to either scrape the entire surface off, potentially have to redo some of the asphalt base underneath it. But if you follow the 777 rule, you, we're seeing tracks easily get 20 years. So resurfacing just that top layer of urethane in seven years.
And I just have two, three types of questions and, and these are Councilor Mello's. I'm gonna ask them all, you've touched on all of it, so I, sorry if I sound repetitive, but, so is artificial turf considered water permeable? What does the installation of synthetic turf athletic field systems do to stormwater management for each site? And what does adding that artificial turf do to the volume of water entering the Potter Mill Brook, which is the brook, like at the bottom of the hill?
So we treat the design of any of our athletic facilities as site development projects. And what that means simply put is the engineering and the handling of stormwater, whether it be stormwater quality or volume of stormwater leaving the site, has to be zero. Pre and post-conditions, so existing conditions, we know with the existing conditions of water runoff off the site. Post-construction conditions of these projects will be equal to or less than what's coming off of the site today. So everything will be treated onsite and it'll be a fully-designed stormwater treatment, best management practice system.
I have two more questions for like the physical part. Are we losing a field at Boardman? If we do, my kids used to play there. No?
No.
Were we placing just one? Okay. I couldn't tell from them. Okay, so that's not overlapping that second one at all? Okay. Okay, and last one on the physical, so there's lighting for nighttime games at the main one?
At the high school stadium.
Yes. So we have a lighting ordinance, but athletic fields or court lighting does not have to comply with it? Will you be taking into consideration like the neighbors or dark sky lighting or what are the plans to make the lighting as unobtrusive as possible since you don't have to comply with the lighting ordinance?
So I'll handle the technical part of the lighting design and how the lights are functioning today as they were 10 years ago, as opposed to how they were 10 years ago. These will be LED lighting systems. The benefit of an LED lighting system is they are able to be aimed directly at the field of play. And if anybody's driven by a newer high school field, you will notice that there is almost no light spread outside of the field itself, to the point where as if you walk outside of the area that's lit, it's almost like you're walking into a dark room, a light room. So the technology of the LED systems are incredible right now as far as stopping light spread out of the system. How it's planned to be utilized.
I think that can go back into the, the first question that I came up for and, you know, it's not a priority question, but it's a, it's a scheduling question. You know, we're making sure not to schedule games, practices, events at night that are gonna go past a certain time or certain threshold that we establish. So, you know, certainly would like to hear potentially what time that is and how that would affect the neighboring, the neighbors and, you know, again, I think the, the way we schedule will consider everybody, not just our team and the team that's out there practicing or playing a game, but the, the community surrounding us as well.
I can't believe I'm gonna ask this question, but my prior life, you talked about heat and that there's some on an optimal sunny day, some extra heat. So I think you also talked about some plantings along the Montgomery roadside. So is it possible to do an equation in terms of some plantings, in terms of trees, that A will act as a buffer, but will really deal with that heat issue relatively inexpensively? And I know you can't do it right up against because you're trying to build in some spectator opportunities, but, and maybe this is outside the scope of what you planned, I guess I would throw it out there, if you don't know the answer, no, fine, but consider that as to kind of, it balances off or counteracts whatever heat may be generated there to resolve that question.
Yeah, I mean, take my scope of work and throw it out the window, I'll just give you my answer. Those existing fields out there are much like a lot of high school fields where it's just a sea of grass and it gets hot out there. There is no doubt, not even going the synthetic turf route. There may be an opportunity to add some tree canopy, not, not shading the field itself.
No, no, no.
But I think, I think there is an opportunity.
But buffering the neighborhood is more to the point.
Yeah, I mean, look at the, look at the parking lot that sits right next door to the fields that are out there. That's a heat sink that, you know, could benefit a little bit from some tree canopy.
Maybe get the genie to put, you know, solar panel, you know, put those up there and then.
There you go.
I don't know that this is a question here either, but I've got a concern in terms, I mean, maintenance has been a major issue here, one reason to go to synthetic in the first place. But there's still a pretty significant and high-tech maintenance plan that has to be followed, seven and seven on the track, you know, the regular, you know, improvements in safety. I'm gonna guess we don't have anybody in-house that can do that. So are we budgeting, and this is why I don't think this is necessarily a question for you, but maybe through the chair to the mayor, are we budgeting the required maintenance, whether that's on a private contract or whether we're gonna hire people to be able to do this? Because if you don't do the maintenance, you're gonna be back here in a couple of years. It's gonna look great on day one, but you gotta maintain it. I know it's a boring part of the whole business, but we don't do a good job at maintenance because we don't give the people the tools and the money. So if we're gonna build it, we've gotta maintain it, so that's gotta be built into the budgets, I guess is more of a statement.
Yeah, I can, I can add a little bit to it. So we didn't really get into the detail, but with the, with the whole project comes the actual groomer. So it's a toe behind a rubber track, heavy-duty lawnmower, UTV, you drag it behind. That comes with the whole system. It's not a separate buy that you have to buy, you have to buy the groomer. Also included in the project is training on how to actually use the groomer, when you groom it, what to look for as far as if there's, you know, some infill material that you can see here visibly and, and how you can scratch it and add some more. The training does come along with it. I would think and we've seen and we've had good luck in other communities where, you know, if somebody is assigned to it with the training and it really is a couple hours a month in order to do it, you're not lining a lot of these fields because a lot of the lines are gonna be stitched in. So that comes off of the, the maintenance regime. So there are a lot of opportunities to make it actually work. As far as the 777, those are years. So in seven years, I would say that in that five-year window, you should start thinking about putting a product, project together and out to bid to get it resurfaced. But those are years, I would, I would hope to think that that could be scheduled. But yeah, the training is part of the project.
You know, when it comes to the bathroom piece, and I know that was a concern about that build-out, I felt the vibe of your voice, even though your voice is a little. Can the mayor come up and just talk a little bit about that, if that's something that he's willing to do?
So a couple of things surrounding the same kind of issues. The bathroom piece is only being held off because we were trying to wait to see what the financing piece was and the term, the actual finance piece of the bond itself. So if there was some wiggle room in terms of the rate being more generous to us, we could build it into there. But if it's not gonna be built into there, I guarantee you there'll be money coming from the city, whether, I'm pretty sure it'll come out of ARPA funding. The, the other two things I just want to touch base on is Mark and John have done a terrific job in their presentation, but, and they kind of stayed away from the conversation with regard to chrome rubber. Everybody in the room should know that we stayed away from chrome rubber. It wasn't, as the folks from SLR said, they were directed to stay away from chrome rubber. Well, we stayed away from it for a reason, it's because it heats to a temperature that's beyond anything that we really would run our kids on. So the bathrooms will be in place and I promise you, the reason why you haven't seen the maintenance piece in place yet is because it hasn't gotten past this stage. When it goes past this stage, hopefully with a, with a yes vote, then you'll see money that'll go into the, the maintenance side of that house, either through the school department or through the city department, because as you know, it's kind of a weird split. Boardman is a city and the school has the softball field and the athletic field on its ground. So thank you very much, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
So I appreciate the fact that we, the bond request was revised and it does list the three projects that we've talked about here in order of Boardman, Westfield High Softball Fields and then the stadium building. So is that the order that they're gonna be funded? And I guess I'm only coming at that from the sense that what if the 11.1 million isn't enough to cover this? Who's catching the short end? I got no problem on the other end, by the way, if you're under budget, that's great, you know, I got, the collect, the collect-all is good by me. I would like to see what next projects you might have in mind, but I'm good with the collector. But is that the order that the projects are gonna get done in? Is that the priority listing?
I was just trying to get something in to, to help out the finance committee chair. It would probably go in exactly the inverse order of that. So my guess is if it went a little bit over the project, you'd have to take the, the lowest number first off of the addendum. And that lowest number, I believe, is the girls softball field at 1.2, the other one's 2.4, the other one's 7.6, give or take, so that would be my guess.
Any further questions? Any further questions like on the physical plant of it or the maintenance? No? Cause are we, I'd still like a presentation on the financing. Were you prepared to, or do you want me to just ask questions or just talking about the bond itself? Yes, unless, unless you have more that you'd like to share.
No, no, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Matthew Barnes, the city treasurer. So you had sent some questions this morning to me about the financing part of this project. The current bonding schedule, the turf fields, this bond would add a million dollars to the debt service for 15 years. So this, this project would fit in with the current debt service level that we maintain, where we're trying to keep the annual debt service to be about 7.2 million dollars. But that's all relative to what other projects we take on. If we go and add in a police station and we have to finish out the building of Franklin Ave School, we'd go over that number. Now, keep in mind this project, it's really offsetting, the budget revenue would increase by the amount of the, the ILOT payment or in lieu of tax payment. So in terms of the actual impact to our budgeted debt service goal of 7.2 million, it's, it's an offset. Like it would increase on the, the expense side, but we'd have an increase on the revenue side to create that offset. You asked about if it would affect our credit rating. You know, it really shouldn't. We do projects all the time with the city, they've never indicated that adding a project would reduce the rating that we have.
May I interrupt and ask a question?
Yeah.
So I thought that if like the number, total amount of our bond payment went too high, that affected our credit rating. It doesn't? Like if it goes, if it's like higher than a certain percent that it was previously, that doesn't affect our credit rating?
Well, not at the level that we've been maintaining with our goal we've kept. You know, if we increase our debt service to, you know, an unreasonable number as a percentage of our total budget, but we've, we haven't approached anything like that.
So what's considered an unreasonable number?
They've never really told us, but if, you know, six to, five to 10% hasn't been, you know, an issue for the city where we've maintained the revenue source that's covered our debt service. We've also contributed to the debt decline service balance over the last few years. So that would help us with offsetting any potential increase related to a potential police station or another project that comes on at the same time as our current Franklin Ave School. So and the rating agency has been aware of that. We've, every time we've met with them, we've discussed that debt service fund. fund.
So, so this won't affect our bonding capacity for the police station or a potential future high school?
Well, so any project affects the bonding capacity. So, um, if we add a new bond, it reduces the available capacity we would have. Um, as of June 30th, 2023, uh, when we had done our last annual debt capacity calculation, we had a capacity of just over 146 million. Um, so we would have room for, for this project, a police station.
Yeah, the bathroom's in there, too.
So, you know, the, that number isn't so much an issue as much, you know, when we talk about what projects can we fund, that's the, the issue is how much of our annual budget do we want to allocate towards debt service versus how much capacity do we have?
Okay.
And you don't want to use up your full capacity either. Something may happen, an unexpected event where you'd have to bond a new building or some kind of new facility that would need a large number. So it's, you know, you don't want to use up your capacity either.
Okay. Um, are there, I mentioned the police station and a potential new high school. Are there any other big projects coming up that we might need to bond for in the next decade?
Yeah, so other than finishing the Franklin Ave School, um, moving forward on a police station and then evaluating the high school, those are the only projects I'm aware of right now for the next 10 years. But again, you don't know what changes in 10 years.
Agreed, agreed.
It's a long time.
Are there any bonds coming offline in the next decade?
Yeah, so, um, there's a lot of projects that come off, but the biggest ones really are, uh, things like the energy conservation projects. Um, that's about a million dollars a year in debt service. That comes off in FY32 was our last payment. Um, but then there's smaller projects too, like the, um, FY28 is the last year for the citywide radio communications equipment. Annual debt service on that's been around 230,000. Um, the Park Square Improvements Project, that ends in FY26, that's about 188,000 a year. So there's a lot of different projects that come off over, uh, the next 10 years.
Okay.
But at the same time, we're, we're adding in our debt service from the Franklin Ave School, you know, this project, potentially a police station. So that number is always changing as we're evaluating that 7.2 million dollar annual, you know, kind of goal for our debt service.
Okay. And why are you assuming a 4% interest rate?
That's just kind of what we have to work with right now. Um, again, the, the interest rates aren't set until we actually sell the bond on the market. Um, it, it just, it all depends. The rates change based on what, you know, the Fed Reserve does. Um, they talk about coming down, but then it hasn't happened as fast as they've sometimes said it would happen. Um, but they've also gone the other way. They've gone up faster than they've said it would happen too. So we don't know what it is until we actually sell it.
And my last question is, like, so when you're getting a mortgage, if you do a 30-year mortgage versus a 15-year mortgage, you get a much better interest rate for the shorter term? Would that apply for a bond like this as well?
So, a, a bond for a project like this, you, you're limited to the useful life of the item you're bonding. So, um, buildings get you 30 years, a facility like this, you know, 15 years is really the max we would look at. You know, without splitting it into all the little pieces. Things like the, the seating has a longer useful life than 15 years, but then you're paying interest on it for, say, 30 years. So it's, then it becomes a trade-off of what are you really saving? You're saving a little bit in the short term, but you're paying interest now for an extra 15 years.
Okay.
Um, so we're limited with the length of the bond to the useful life of the, the project.
Okay. All right, thanks. Any other questions?
Just, just on the, really the rating agency more than it. So bond inside and outside. So usually when you have a bond that's from the G and E or the Water Department, the sewer, there's a attached revenue stream for it, so it doesn't really kind of count towards what the rating agencies take a look at, is when they send our bond ratings. So was this bond because it's gonna be supported by the ILOT payment from the G and E, a revenue generating department? Is that gonna be looked at differently than as if we went out for the school minus the SBAB money?
This is still considered a city general obligation project.
Okay, even though it's backed by the G and E ILOT payment?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Um, are we, I appreciate the language in the bond. Are we able to condition this at all, or is it really gotta go through this way? So in other words, can it say there shall be a bathroom? Just asking.
Yeah, you, if the, you know, if the language needs to change, that's...
I, I don't wanna, wanna follow law or Wall Street or anybody else, but I, how far can the contingency go?
So the, the bond order just says what we can do.
Yep.
So you could, you could word it and say to include bathrooms. Um, but just because it's named in the bond doesn't mean it'll actually get spent there. We can't, so like the three projects are named now. If there's not enough money, it doesn't force us to actually do that part of the project.
Well, there is if I move the stadium to the number one priority and include the bathrooms.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, changing that wording doesn't force the spending to that item. Um, that's just what's allowed for the bond to be spent on.
I got it.
So we can, we could add it or...
I got it.
Yeah.
I appreciate that answer. Thanks.
Any further questions on the bonding?
Thanks, Matt. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Oh, I got one other. Are you gonna go to something else?
I was going to.
No?
Go, I was gonna move to something else, yeah.
Okay, just through the chair, and I think this is back to the original presentation. Do you have the name of the outside third party we're gonna use to do the evaluation on the products?
We can provide that. I don't have it with me, but there's a couple that are, and I would say that every couple of months, there's going to be new third-party people who are doing the testing, just because it's something that is relatively recent.
How about, how about the three you're gonna recommend?
Sure, we can get that to you.
Okay.
All right. Um, I also invited, uh, General Manager Flaherty here. I have some questions on the G and E.
Tom Flaherty, General Manager, Westfield Gas and Electric, 79 Wildflower Circle.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, have you finished the build-out for Whip City Fiber in Westfield?
Uh, we should be built out by first quarter of next year.
Okay. Um, I asked you in writing to provide a projection of Whip City Fiber profits for the next 15 years. You said that would be challenging to do. Can you discuss that?
No, I just said I wouldn't do that.
You wouldn't do that?
Right. What I did provide to you was that we had, uh, entered long-term contracts recently with all 21 communities that we're serving, or going to be serving.
And you said you're really confident that, in the email, that you'll be able to provide this?
Yes.
Okay. Have, there been discussions about how Verizon's Plan 5G network might cut into your Whip City Fiber profits?
Internally, yes.
Can you talk about that at all?
No.
Okay. So I, I know, I'll just say as a statement, as a city councilor, like, I went on Verizon website today, and for my address, they said that I could order 5G right now. I don't know if that's accurate, if I filled out the form, if I'd get it, but...
We actually recently had Verizon in, uh, to our facility because of issues that we're having in, in Westfield with our emergency response services. I would imagine it's similar to issues that the city would be having with their emergency response services. And they cannot provide guarantees. If you look at, uh, the hillside area of, of Westfield, there's almost zero connectivity in, um, for Verizon. Um, we are working with Verizon as far as they're putting up, uh, pole-top, um, transmitters near the turnpike, and that's the only place they have, uh, any, um, any infrastructure improvements right now going on, on poles in Westfield.
Okay, currently?
Currently.
And you said they can't provide, I'm just asking a clarifying question. They can't provide it everywhere, or they can't provide it in certain locations?
They can't guarantee the providing of, of service in certain areas. They actually gave us boosters to use in, in our trucks to test, and they're not working either.
Okay.
So, uh, we're in talks with, uh, three other carriers, uh, as well. Um, two independent carriers that actually use, you know, AT&amp;T and Verizon Towers and, and, and other towers with T-Mobile. Um, but right now, uh, the, the 5G is not a guaranteed service in Westfield, or even Western Mass for that matter.
Okay. Um, is this $1 million annual ILOT payment guaranteed for all 15 years of the bond?
It is a vote that the board did last year, and each year it will be voted on with the, uh, current lieu of tax, uh, calculation every year.
Okay. And what are the issues they'll be considering when they vote to approve?
The recommendation of the General Manager.
Okay. Is it possible they could vote no?
Um, I, I guess they could, but, uh, typically the recommendation of the General Manager has been followed for the 20 years that I've been involved with the department.
Okay. Um, is, this $1 million is in addition to the $580,000 ILOT payment? Is, is, what is there to prevent the reduction of the ILOT payment if things get tight at G and E? Like, would that other one that you're already giving us, will that still continue?
We, uh, so this would be two separate. This is coming from the, uh, revenues and net income from Whip City Fiber, or Whip City Fiber Division. So we currently run three separate divisions. You can't cross-pollinate, uh, and fund divisions from, from, um, from each other. And if you did, you have to take loans out, which is what we did 20 years ago to put in the natural gas pipeline from Southwick. But, um, as far as going forward with the calculation, um, we've been working on that calculation, I think, since 2004 or 2005, uh, and it's only gone up. I think in this year, because of the, uh, because of the tax rate change, uh, going lower for, for commercial, um, there was a slight reduction in the, in the base, uh, in lieu of tax payment.
Okay.
It's actually on the agenda for tomorrow night if you'd like to come.
I have another meeting Saturday.
Oh, lover.
Um, would you be willing to sign an MOU, a memorandum of agreement, that this financing is guaranteed?
That would be, it's based on a vote from the board, so the board would have to sign that.
The, could, could the board sign it?
Yeah.
Each year, or for, could the, could the board now sign that to compel future boards to always vote yes?
That's from a vote of, vote of the board, correct.
Okay. If we don't bond for this project, will you give the ILOT money to the city of Westfield anyway, or is this contingent on the bond?
As of right now, it's contingent on the bond.
Why are you making that decision?
That's, that's something that we worked out. If you go back to when we came for the bond, I think it was in 2014, 2015, a counselor who had the same name, last name as me, uh, had concerns about losing revenue from Comcast, uh, and the, uh, the monthly contributions from, I think it was $12 a customer or so. And he was concerned at that time, one of the direct questions he asked me when I was on the board, was what happens to the money that the city loses, uh, it's actually be, maybe defined as non-tax revenue, but still coming from the taxpayers in Westfield. Um, and we couldn't guarantee that there would be any payback of that money, because at that time, we couldn't guarantee that we were gonna receive a profit or to make a profit here in Westfield. We had the opportunity, and we took advantage of the opportunity to expand the Whip City Fiber business with 20 Hilltown communities, and now we're building out with our neighboring communities as well. So with that being said, um, you know, our, our growth on that side, we've had a phenomenal amount of growth. We had $3.5 million in investment in Westfield alone last year, and we still had $3.5 million in net income.
All right. Do you believe in this project and want to see it happen?
I do believe in this project, and I think it's necessary for, uh, for Westfield.
Okay. Um, and this is Councilor Mello's question. Is the use of municipal utility revenue to fund recreational fields allowed by DPU?
It's, uh, not involved in the DPU at all.
Okay. And you did give, send me a memo late today that, um, regarding the legality of funding this project, and I'll add that to Councilship.
Yeah, thank you. That was, uh, done last year at the request of a couple commissioners.
All right. Any further questions? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Um, I do, do you have any, I have some remaining general questions. I don't know who will answer them.
I'm good.
I'll just do yours, uh, okay. What if the municipal light board doesn't vote to increase the ILOT as promised? What happens? Like, what happens if we bond for this and then we don't get the money from Westfield G and E? What happens?
They, I, we have to pay it.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's an obligation of the city of Westfield.
This is, yeah, city of Westfield obligation.
So if the ILOT doesn't come through, we still have to pay for this bond?
Correct.
Once we bond it?
Yeah, for the amount that's sold and, um, city's responsible for its payment.
Okay. And same thing if it, they decrease it. If we get the ILOT, but it's smaller, we're still responsible for the difference?
So once the bond is sold, uh, we have an amortization schedule for, let's say, 15 years. The city's obligation is to pay that for 15 years. Um, whatever the revenue source is to pay that, the city has to come up with the money to pay for it.
Okay. Councilor Mello asked this question. What if the upcoming budget requires many layoffs? Is this still a good idea then? Meaning bonding for the athletic fields?
I don't think Matt can answer that question.
So, I agree, I agree. It's hard, it's hard to group them perfectly. I apologize.
I don't think that's a math question.
So, um, Matt is correct. If, uh, the G and E suddenly decides that they don't want to, uh, go with their commitment, um, then the city is responsible for the payment. Um, as to the question for the budget, it's not before you yet. Um, there are no layoffs that we're looking at right now on the city's side. There are also no new positions on the city's side, but there are, are no layoffs, so I don't anticipate that being a problem. But let me circle this back around just a second. We should be clear that the reason why we're doing this in the first place is because the city wasn't in a position where they could do it on their own. It became very, very clear when we were looking at, uh, the conditions of our fields throughout, throughout the entire city in its entirety, that they were woefully, they, they just were not in good shape. So our partners from the G and E decided to come up with a plan to, um, enable us to financially bring up these fields, um, for our children so that we could enhance their growth in our community. So I can't imagine any, um, position that the, the G and E would have that they would want to renig on the, on their, on their own agreement. They, they're the ones that came up with it. So I hope that helps your consideration, your contemplation.
Okay. And can I ask one final question? Whose decision was it that the money only go to the athletic fields?
It's a good question. So the proposal came from, um, the, the G and E that we take a look at trying to invest in the, um, athletic field. So it was the G and E's.
Okay. And one clarifying question?
Sure.
You said there's no cuts on, so no layoffs on the city's side? Might there be some...
So I don't, I don't really want to go into the budget questions until they're prepared for people. Okay?
Thank you.
I'm good.
All right, I have no final questions.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the bond. Um, I would like to amend that to add it to our Thursday night agenda.
Second?
And it is before 7 o'clock, which is 48 hours for the amendment.
Okay, so I, my, I spoke to the city clerk. My understanding is, as Chair of Finance, I have the right to put it or not put it on the agenda, and I've chosen not to. And my understanding is that's my prerogative as Chair of Finance, because this is a long, difficult, complicated question, and I want to make sure we have time to think things through. Councilor Sullivan?
I got, I got a problem with that. That's not the way you or any other Chair of Finance has ever run this and taken it upon the chair to hold this up with no consultation from any other member. So I think it's wrong. I have no problem moving this forward tonight. I will support the motion. I think this is a good project. I think, quite honestly, the fact that we were able to do these fields is a real example of the importance of having a municipal gas and electric department who can step forward and play this role. And while I certainly have had conversations in my some 30 years on in lieu of tax payments, and even going back to the days when that wasn't part of these conversations, because I was actually in high school, but in the 1970s, they actually paid more money than they do today, dollar for dollar, not even counting inflation. And I've always been a proponent and an advocate for them paying more in, even though I think we get a whole ton of benefits from having them, including their money inside deposit, helping our clients. helping our bonding rate, the other support they give to the community in traffic and lighting. So this is a really good project. I understand you have to trust the Gas and Electric Commission to make this vote every year, but there's been little turnover in that commission. And while they're certainly going to look out for what's in the best interest of the ratepayers, and every single given year, I'm confident that they will also acknowledge their obligation to the city in making this payment, so I don't think there's any risks. So I am prepared to move forward tonight.
So we can have a vote, there's a second. We can vote on the motion. I will be reaching out to legal, though, to ask if it's legal. And if it is, it can go on the agenda. If it's not, it won't. But you guys, you can vote, and I'm going to abstain on this vote. So I'm in favor of the motion to add to the city council's full agenda.
And for the approval of the bond.
No, no. Can we do them separately?
What do you do?
Why, why would we not do them separately?
I just amended to add it to our agenda. There's really not any other thing to talk about.
Okay, then, then I will explain my vote and you can vote on that, because you have a second.
So to clarify, the vote is to approve the bond and send it to our agenda prior to 7:00 PM today for 48-hour notice.
Which, just comment on that. There's obviously public comment at two separate meetings of the council for any questions that weren't answered or asked this evening. So there's still plenty of opportunities for public participa- two more for public participation.
Correct. Two more opportunities.
Okay. So I'm going to discuss my vote before we vote. I'm going to explain my vote. I'm going to say why, and I'm going to give a, say what I would be a yes on. So as you can guess from my preface, I'm a no on the $11 million bond. And it really only circles around one reason. I have no proof or guarantee that Westfield Gas and Electric, as well-intentioned as this is, can guarantee that for 15 years, they can give us $1 million every year. I want to just talk about all the ways that this could go wrong. First, as it was clarified, the board could just simply vote no. They could have lots of money and just vote no. But there could not be enough money for them to give it to us. So Westfield Gas and, sorry, Whip City Fiber, the internet changes really rapidly. 5G is already going up. For them to say, oh, no problem, for 15 years, we're going to be able to do that. And I asked the general manager if he could give me a 15-year projection of Whip City Fiber project, sorry, Whip City Fiber profits, and he refused to give them to me. And I think that's an indication that they're just crossing their fingers, hoping that it will last for 15 years. Furthermore, we're about to go through a huge energy transition. The state might require Westfield Gas and Electric to invest in other things, and it might take away the money from Whip City Fiber, and they might not be available. And the fourth thing is there's all sorts of emergencies that happen, like barges hit bridges and bridges fall down, and you think it's going to be okay, and then suddenly there's a problem. So my fundamental problem is that I don't think we can count on, as well-intentioned as this is, for 15 years, $15 million. That's my central worry, and that's why I'm voting no. However, I would be a yes on a smaller project. So if we took out the Boardman Field and we took out the softball field, and I also took out, I found, you guys will laugh at me, a Grant for Trees. It's brand new. I inserted the information on that in the email. I've taken that out, and if we take all those out, we are down to $7,420,000. And then if we take the million dollars for nine years, we can pay that off. So I think, I'm a little nervous even about the nine-year time span and that we'll get the million dollars every year, but I think it's more accurate, the projection, the closer to now. And then once we go out past the nine or 10 years, I'm worried that's where it's going to get wonky. So we can pay off the track and field in nine years, and if, I can interrupt, if anybody in the public wants it, here is the projection. The side, so the primary reason why I'm asking for this is because I think we're more likely to get that money for the nine years. The side bonus is my plan saves us $2.3 million in interest, because it's a shorter term and it's less of a project. The other side benefit is that when we come up for that, like eight to 10-year replacement of the turf, which could end up being expensive, if the money is still coming in from G and E, we could use that for the replacement. And the two people who spoke during public comment in favor of this talked about the field and the track, and we'd still have the field and the track. So this is my preference. I'm a yes on this proposal. I'm a no on this $11 million. If you guys would like to clarify your vote before you vote, now's a great time.
Nope. I'm a yes. I'm a yes, also.
Okay. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. Motion passes two to one. And can I get a final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.